So we are here today as the illustrious members of the working group for 50 North, really, to discuss the legislation that we took another stab at after our joint meeting with the planning board, which was very, very helpful. So take it away.
Let me just set the table, if I may. After the joint work session with the planning board, Sabrina, Jen and myself spoke the feedback that we heard there, as well as the planning board's draft referral memo, and went back to the draft legislation and started editing. The effort was to try to incorporate as much of that comments and info as possible. Let me just explain, before we start, let me just explain what you have in front of you. In addition to a clean version of the legislation, and the reason we didn't generate a red line for you to look at is because between the three of us, with all the redlining and comments and back and forth and comments to comments, it was not really going to be a usable document. But we all can walk through and point out what's changed and where. So you have the clean version in front of you. You also have another document. So one of the comments that we heard loud and clear at the joint work session was that the purpose and intent section of the earlier draft was amiss. That had to be reworked. So we've taken a stab at it in the clean version of the legislation. You'll see that's on a lot shorter. This other document, there was an effort to give primarily the town board something to look at that spoke to the goal of achieving something that was green, sustainable, spoke to all of those issues that the town board has identified as being important with respect to this particular project. So this is just, this single-page document is just a working draft. And our thinking is that this wouldn't necessarily find its place into legislation, into the code, but it could be either in the local law that's enacted. So there'll be a section, typically is a section in the local law that talks about purpose. Why are we here? Why are we doing this? That doesn't actually get codified. It could also be in the, if there's a resolution approving or enacting the local law, this could be recited in that resolution. It could be in both places, but it's something for the board to work with. So we thought that we would suggest just going provision by provision from front to back and walking the board through the changes, letting you discuss and comment and give us feedback about.
Okay, the other thing on this, which I haven't obviously focused on, but maybe in addition to the environmental, we want to add in that we focus on building affordable and attainable housing and the fact that this exceeds the requirement of the town code, current requirement of town code.
Yeah, we have in the legislation, if we pick off, we say help promote diversity and affordability of housing types. And that is language that we're suggesting be in.
Right, but I've seen that in this.
In there as well, yeah. This is really focused again on the green, sustainable.
Yep.
So if that, if you want to proceed that way, does that make sense?
Yeah, to go through it, yeah.
Page by page.
If that makes a lot of sense.
So you guys have jumped in. But I think the first thing, we've already just now talked about the change.
Can I, can I just say one thing? I'm sorry, we'll do that. So just for the public that's here. So this is a work session where it's really like a chance for us to, you know, as this working group and with attorneys and town staff to kind of sit down and kind of hash out things, because we never have a chance. We don't privately sit and do this. We have to do it publicly. So it's, it's not a meeting, you know, like a public meeting. But certainly if you guys have questions or something and want to, you know, we would listen to you. But it's really meant to be a work session. We are going to be having plenty of public meetings on this and certainly soliciting comments, et cetera. But this is really meant to be not a public meeting where we're going to say, you know, come up if you have comments. So it's really more for you to listen. But certainly if you have something, I'm not going to say you can't speak.
And just to be clear, to add on that in terms of the process, eventually when the draft legislation is as close to ready as it can be, there'll be a public hearing.
Yeah, absolutely.
And at that point, there'll be opportunities for residents to comment on this. That, that hasn't even started yet. So we're really sort of just getting to first base in terms of process.
Right. Okay.
I want to say thank you for that clarification, because I got an email today.
I saw that.
Yes. So I came because I'm interested in the project.
Yeah.
For the project, in fact. And so I want to tell, but there's not going to really be public comments tonight.
Well, there can, there can be, you know. It's not official public comment, but certainly if you guys have something to say, we'd have to hear it. But we will be having plenty of public meetings. And, you know, I do try through the supervisors' reports and on Facebook and wherever I can to kind of let people know what's going on, just so everyone's aware that this project is, is happening and being considered. And, but it's nice to hear your favor of it.
When will the project, when will there be like a rendering and that kind of thing for like public comment? Is that part of the project or will we never see that? Because it's just a question of legislation to permit a certain increase in density.
So there are different, you can answer that, but, or can I answer until I make them work?
There are concept drawings. They're, they're on the website.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a little detail of that now. Sorry for my bad, but yeah.
Thank you.
So often there's a section, there's a landing page on the website that's got information of this project.
Thank you.
Projects of note. And a lot of information.
Okay, great.
Maybe I'll actually put down the supervisor's report and tell people where to find that.
Double D R. Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right. But you don't have to stick around if you need to. It's all being recorded as well. All right, sorry, go ahead. Take it away.
Takes us back to purpose and intent. And there's been a new language we have there. So if you want to take a look at that, I'll send you what you think.
So, you know, I've done, you know, we received this earlier this week and really appreciated all the work involved. But I think in general, so much better, stronger and clearer and more to the point. I made a couple notes throughout. On the purpose and intent, I think it's, you know, obviously you heard from us that the initial one was a little bit too out there. The only, the only issue I have with this one is, yeah, it's not all that material, but just the word relatively, relatively large in that first sentence. I don't know that the word relatively is necessary. But it just, I don't know that it means anything, but also.
Would you prefer to have the exact acreage or square footage? Is that typical?
Well, that comes later, right? What is the definition of a size requirement?
Right.
But, but just.
There you just go.
It just says the relatively largest.
We said those would like be comparison to other properties in the.
Well, I guess the question is, what is, what is the purpose of saying there?
I think you could, you could give a.
I think large is fine, right? Yeah, okay.
That's the only comment I had on the purpose and intent. Hey.
And then I also thought, I just had a question. When we're talking about that it exceeds the currently applicable green building home requirements in chapter 74 of our code, does that include the New York State stretch code?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I was okay with the rest of this.
Tom, did you have any comments?
No.
Really? Yay.
So I'll do a good stuff. So moving on to the site requirements section, the, some central changes there to reflect the board's desire to deal with one property and keep it in the VRP with respect to that one property. The original version had VR stamped in and one other property potentially being picked up as eligible. We got away from that with the source.
Is that other property in the VR?
No, it's in the VR.
It's in BR.
Right, so that, that language that referenced the VR came out.
Okay.
So where that property be rezoned to the VRP district, it would then become eligible for the special apartment, is that fair to say?
If it was VRP, it could be, I think.
But it would have to meet all the other requirements.
But it's, yeah, but it meets the minimum size requirement.
Bigger.
Right, and so, so just by that, then.
Yeah.
Be eligible. Got it. Okay, I think that makes sense. I think that.
Um. So I just had a question about variances here, because, you know, we don't want, when it says relief from the site requirements may be granted upon application in the hearing of the zoning board of appeals, relief from which site requirement?
This is just specific to the site, well, the locational and dimensional requirements. It says site requirements of this subsection.
So why would we want to allow a variance? Because I don't know that we want to, I'm worried that it's going to go down a path where you're going to have somebody who has, you know, a third of an acre saying, okay, well, now I need to build.
Right, I think the thinking there is.
Or that it's going to move to the eastern side of the street, which we don't want.
The thinking there is that the right to apply for a variance is something that is, you know, it's right, can't take that away. But what you can do is, in this case, we said that the standard for granting that type of variance would be a use variance standard, which is much different than an area variance. So this whole section is talking about dimensional requirements. What lawyers and court talks about is fault requirements. And fault requirements are subject to area variances. And that's a balancing test. The use variance test is much stricter. Frankly, it would be difficult or impossible for a property owner to meet who had a perfectly viable alternative. And we need to, you know, essentially, essentially this is.
So it's only a variance for use if they're seeking a use variance?
It's going to, you'd have to satisfy the use variance standard.
Which is much stricter and much.
Yes. It's a dollars and cents for if you have to show and can't get a reasonable return for your investment property by showing actual financial proof to the zoning board when you compare it to any other permitted use in this district. So it's a pretty high burden.
Okay.
So I prefer use, it's a bond, economically bound.
Okay. Thank you.
We took out the language about home office. It's a line in there allowing the town board to authorize the establishment of a room as a home office that is just seen as not necessary. So that's come out. Otherwise, a drawing that subsection has stayed the same.
I got a question on it. And it's something that we discussed or I've raised previously. Why are we limiting to two bedrooms?
The code right now for the VRP has that limitation already. Two bedrooms maximum for residential use on a second story. And that's been in code almost 20 years. If you look at the purpose and intent existing of VRP and VR zoning, it talks about a lot of the things that we've been talking about more recently in terms of putting, giving people the opportunity to live in a business district in our downtown. But that limitation, I can't speak for what folks were talking about thinking 20 years ago. But I cannot sort of, recently the concern was the school impacts, enrollment impacts as a way of keeping that, mitigating that potential impact.
Right, so, and that, that corresponds with the square footage limitation as well, right? It's the same concept.
Yeah.
Two things on that. One is, does that mean that subsequent to development, permitting, specific access, all that, units cannot be combined?
That would, yeah, it could not.
Okay.
Combine and be in violation of the zone.
Got it. It might be an unpopular opinion, but I, you know, I welcome larger families. And I know, it's not, maybe there can be a limitation on the number of large units, but I personally wouldn't want to see a wholesale, you know, elimination of units larger than two bedrooms. But another unpopular opinion.
I personally feel like since this is the first, we're dipping our toe in the pond, I feel like, in terms of development and trying to get this building off the ground. I, I personally just am not ready to expand beyond the scope of what we have here. It's a small building, it's not kind of square footage, you know, it doesn't matter, right? I mean, we could just cut out some two bedrooms and make some three. It doesn't change the size of the building. That's not what I'm trying to say, I just, I don't know. So I love the idea.
The developers here, were you planning any three bedrooms in there?
We weren't, because we had that, this response of, we don't want them in town. We think it's going to affect the school, they're going to make them harder. The kind of home office concept, everybody, how many people are from home? You know, ones with separate home office, twos with a separate home office. We kind of went down the road that your twos could be bigger and have a home office. And went as far as saying they won't have a closet, so that couldn't be a bedroom for that fact. Because we're sensitive to that nature. I think there's a demand for them. I think there's the demand for the fact that it's not necessarily for the, I think you have families downsizing, you have empty masters downsizing, and people that just truly want space. And if you're leaving a house, the amount of stuff you have to go from a house to a two-bedroom or your family that wants to save you whatnot. There's certainly the demand for it. I guess the problem on the other side of it, if you want to see a limited amount of them, we're happy to do it.
But there could be like two bedrooms with alcoves for an office or something.
Yeah, home office. That's why we hadn't been there without a closet.
Well, I was thinking about a door, too.
And I think the reason we took that out was because, not to say that you can't have a home office, but to say that the town board or the authority doesn't need to determine whether that's a home office.
Where you're putting a desk in your, in your, got it.
Yeah.
Right, that's why, when we saw the changes, we were like.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, you know, cognizant of, one of the things I liked about this is that, you know, under our comprehensive plan, we were looking for other housing uses that, you know, would allow people who want to leave their homes or, and, you know, downsize or young families or even, you know, young kids who don't yet have families to be able to live near the train and have this. I think the thought was we didn't want to overburden our schools and provide something that, you know, three bedrooms, maybe you're getting more cars or, I don't know. I think we thought keeping it small was, was better, at least initially.
Maybe one of the ways to combat that idea is maybe the size of the two bedrooms would be a little bit bigger. So, I mean, it's 2,000 square feet for two bedrooms, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's big.
Two bedrooms.
That's plenty of room if that second bedroom for kids to share.
Yeah.
That's, that's a good size, two bedrooms, yeah.
Just designed to 1,200 square for three bedrooms. 2,000, 2,000 of it. At the risk of sounding like a broken record, there's plenty of time to talk about two versus three.
Right, okay.
Public hearing, it's coming. Those impacts and decisions are important.
Okay.
Next section allowed. Glad it was the affordable housing section. Here, change the, the 10% minimum AFFH requirement, 12. And we also suggested allowing the applicant to meet the minimum by providing 10% AFFH and one additional workforce unit. Town code right now has a definition for workforce housing. That's a little bit more, the income eligibility criteria are a bit higher. They're more than, and they're a bit higher than the AFFH. So that's something that you've heard the town board say coming to the mix of housing. After the people building.
Does that get us to the 12%?
Uh, yes, so additional work, 12% is essentially six units. Could be six minutes of AFFH. 10 is five, plus the one workforce, so which is six. We are rounding up. That language is in the code. And that's the way, you know, when the county calculates AFFH standards, that's the way the county does it. So I mean, it's different percentages, but that's, that's the idea.
What do you guys think?
So I like it. And the only, the only issue I have here is actually just with the math that, because we're not locking it in limit to a certain number of units, I wouldn't want one workforce unit to trigger to drop from 12 to 10, I would say. Because if it's like 70 units or whatever it is, it may not be one unit that is the difference. I would, if we're switching to workforce, I'd want it to be whatever the 2% difference is.
Right.
Does that make sense?
So in other words, if it's not 45 units, that may have, it's made changes, the assumptions change.
It's 10% and 10%.
Yeah, exactly. We can do 2% workforce.
Only just locking the units, to be clear. Because we've been clear since day one.
It's easier to do percent.
We need to do legislation that makes sense, as if it's not for a specific project.
Yeah, this is all for a specific project.
The way we're writing the legislation is a specific project in mind, but it has to be written in a general sense.
It's also premature to talk about specific units in legislation.
I printed mine out.
Yeah.
This one's good, what's wrong?
Mine is. Thank you.
Thank you for pointing.
Is that going to page three?
Yeah.
So these copies.
Mine does that, too.
Yeah, mine does, too. It's only the, it's only the odd, the odd number of pages were printed.
It's fine, I have it on my computer.
We do not have a copy of here.
Oh. Ice machine, yes.
Ice machine, I got, got you all day.
Oh, no, I have it actually in the deck.
Do you get the center? All of us.
Yeah, sir.
All right, so we've got that change on the AFFH workforce. Yeah, you want to take the next?
Sure, I can do the traffic. So maybe get there. Um, so the traffic is really, it was redoing the traffic in relation to the 2019 IT standards. So we put in, so I put in what that would be trade to when it came to residential, like family use, and then the retail and restaurant use. So it's directly out of those engineering standards, which are several version update compared to what's in our code today. And then we are working on a standard regarding on 9B, the town board may approve a reduction of the minimum standards based on, you know, finding that there is available parking X number of feet from the site. So, you know, if there's parking on off-hours in the train station lots or the lots behind the businesses, that you have the flexibility to say, okay, we're going to reduce this by two spaces.
You jumped from traffic department, right?
I went from off-street parking and loading to the standards. Oh, I'm sorry. Traffic manager. So the intention here was to investigate the intersections that are in relation to this proposed project to make sure they can handle the additional traffic. And then if it was proven that they weren't, that there'd be necessary improvements that need to be made. And then this is the same as in the previous version with the off-street bicycle parking with one enclosed space for each unit. And then we had the, the permitted uses are the same as listed previously.
We just added, we added the.
You have any accessory use customary to a permitted principal use on the same lot. So that's consistent with the code of what is allowed now in VRP's restricted. Any comments on that? Okay. And then we have utilities and services. I don't know that we made any, we took out A, which used to be water and sewer service. They're all energy zero projects, probably located within public water and sewer service. So when reduced down to one property, this property is in a water district. So we left it in there. Yeah, and then we have refuge and storage. Everything is pretty much the same in here. And then where we made the next set of changes, what is the off-street parking and loading, where we went to the IT standards. And then the alternate for parking to allow.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
So, so section A in the off-street parking and loading is already a reduction from where we are today, right?
Correct.
It's a reduction in residential from the 1.3 or whatever to the one. And then this retail is also a reduction?
Correct.
Okay, and is what was proposed originally, does that meet, does that meet section A or no? Does not, right?
There have been, there have been some, no, it does not.
Okay.
What was proposed originally was consistent with the standards that are in our code today with changes to commercial.
Right.
This is a change based on known engineering standards.
So how many units, excuse me, parking spaces do you have a sense of that would be necessary if it would be standard A? If this size building or, you know.
Honestly, they could accommodate most parking on site. It really depends on the size of their restaurant. They may need allowances for, for off-site vehicles.
Okay, that sounds much better than.
Well, and, and one of the things, and I believe I circulated to both the town board and planning board, the IT information, one of the things about that IT information and why it is much more reliable now than it has been in previous versions is that 60%, there was a real examination of real projects and real data for 60% more than previous standards. So they used real data, which they hadn't done previously. You know, it was based on modeling and hypotheses. So I feel very comfortable with the 2019 standards, perfectly speaking with transportation engineers who have been implementing the 2019 standards. And so, one of the, does anyone else have any questions about that section?
On the restaurant, is it front house and back house? Or front of us for that conversation?
Wow, and you did not specify.
We probably need to.
Because back of house, isn't that the same as like any merchant, where there's merchant parking?
Standard, I think, is, is coast per footage. So we need to specify that, because that's a little.
Yeah, no, I know. Yeah, no, I know.
Thank you. Why, um, but I, I, I just, maybe I'll choose, I don't understand the difference. If you have people working in a restaurant, how is that different from people working in a store where they get a certain amount of merchant parking?
There's not much difference.
So why would we make a require, a different requirement because it's a restaurant?
No, we're not making a requirement, we're confirming if that required space includes both of those things. We're assuming that it does.
Right now, right now, it's originally including the gross floor, floor area for a restaurant. If you have an eight hundred square foot restaurant, regardless of how much is front or back, then it would be less than ten thousand square feet, you need two point eight spaces per thousand. So you would need two point eight spaces for your eight hundred square foot restaurant.
Got it, okay.
Right, so in actuality, this is, this is, we don't do a point eight.
Okay, got it.
Um, so the B, section B, that starts on page three and goes to the top of page four, we talk about, you know, the distances, the distance allocation if you're within public parking or available parking. Site, uh, item three, onsite car sharing. What happens here right now, onsite car sharing, they allow a twenty-five percent reduction in the required minimum number of parking requirements for multi-family use. That is still under analysis. We don't know, you know, in the quick research we did, there are developments that municipalities have given a twenty-five percent reduction. We're trying to find out more information about those developments, where they're located, what type, what size developments they are. My research so far has related to residential development, the, the residential aspect. We can't give a credit for commercial use.
Right, right.
Right, so the question with the car share is kind of twofold. What is the characteristic of developments that have used the twenty-five percent car share? Because it's new. It's not, the IT standards doesn't address it. Some transportation engineers have never come across it. So we're trying to dig out kind of the net net of the world that is using this. The second question is, is it twenty-five percent wholesale, how many car shares, how many vehicles are dedicated towards that car share?
Right.
You know, so we really are, need more information about this, but that is a benchmarking here now, based on quick research, we're doing the detailed research.
And that would be a twenty-five percent decrease from this chart?
Just, but just the residential.
For just the residential.
Yeah.
I would say.
We're looking at, if we're looking at one space per unit, right, twenty, and it's forty-five units, and twenty-five percent reduction of that forty-five because you're going to have residents who don't have a car, but will utilize the car share service.
So just by way of example, I, I, um, go to this hotel all the time near my daughter's college, um, that has a car share service where, um, it's an electric car and you can rent it by the hour, and because of that, I don't rent a car when I go there. And I know a lot of people also who stay at that same hotel, because it's super convenient. And they also don't rent a car because you can use that. So I've seen it, and a hotel is not, you know, if you make it akin to like an apartment.
Yeah.
Um, because, you know, we go to Target and I run errands for her and we use that and don't rent a car. So I have seen it work.
Yeah, that's great. Um, then, uh, as you said, that's a different application.
No, no, it is, but I'm just thinking of it as people living there and wanting to run errands.
Where we have the car share and don't take a reduction in the required parking, where we can still keep the parking requirements as they are and still have the percentage car share that they want?
Sure. Yeah, yeah, there's no, there's no rule regarding that right now.
Parking just seems to be such a topic that we talk that out, and it seems to be on top of everyone's mind, everyone seems to be really concerned, and I'm I don't know if I'm, um, misunderstanding, but if we can have the car share, but also keep a, a, a standard where we're not getting rid of parking spaces, maybe that.
Concerned about going down to one space per unit. And you want to have a car share in addition to the one space per unit, it is definitively your prerogative.
Well, you have to have one space per unit.
Right.
Right, but it does not make sense to have a car share and allocate that car share as a reduction in parking spaces for other than residential. Okay, so, so it doesn't make sense to have a car share for commercial.
So you, you, in effect, you
Right.
You're not going to have one if this is what ends up happening, the twenty-five percent, which is like ten spaces, eleven spaces for forty-five units, right? That's, I think, my math is right. You're not going to have one space per unit. You're going to have point seven five space per unit.
Right.
So one needs to be comfortable, I think, maybe not just with the percentage, but the actual number of spaces that are going to be there. And this is not, I mean, as you said, this is not new. I mean, I did some of the Pittsburgh ten years ago, and zip cars were everywhere.
Yeah.
And that's the kind of thing we're talking about. So I'm kind of surprised that, I'm not saying that, that you guys haven't done the search, but I'm kind of surprised that, you know, the traffic sort of parking gurus haven't caught up with this or are able to provide better information on this. Uh, at this point, it sounds like it's more like a guess, but it's a little, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But there's time, right, to sort of chase this down, because you're going to go through a longer process.
Yeah.
But I'd be very careful about, you know, ten spaces is a lot to sort of, I think, to put your base in.
I agree.
Is it fair to say, and should we add that the twenty-five percent, in terms of a placeholder number, it's probably at the high end?
Yeah.
Right, so that easily could be a smaller number or just not have it.
Yeah.
Because it's, it sounds awesome in theory, right, that the people that are renting would have a car share, and that would be the primary how people would get around, but just my experience of living here specifically, people are very reliant on their cars, and as much as I would love to be idealistic and get away from that, I also don't want to set us up for failure in that we're putting up this building that just, just does not meet the needs of the people that want to rent.
You know, I think, one second, I mean, I think it's unrealistic to think that you won't have at least one car for every apartment. I think you could make an argument that you might not have two if a car share is available, or one point eight, or whatever, but, um, I mean, at a minimum, I think you have to assume there's one.
And I agree with Tom, like, if we're talking about ten or eleven spots, it's a lot for a building this size, it's a lot.
Okay.
So the concept that, um, we're talking about here, now I know where the twenty-five percent came from. So somebody killed on five foot. So you came out of Santa Monica that gave you twenty-five percent reduction for car share. The car sharing is specifically for the residents, where zip car typically used to be like in a Hertz or in a public setting, where anybody could use it. These are specific to the residents. Only the residents can use them more often than like your commercial tenants in this kind of use, but they're not open to the public. So they're specifically, and the studies that were done, and there's, uh, the parking study we did, it says, I think it's five cars for every one car share. It reduces the need for five parking spots. This is, this is somebody much smarter than us did this. So for one car, it reduces five parking spots. But in Santa Monica, they did this broad-based study, and they came up with, with their car sharing programs, they reduced the need for parking by twenty-five percent. So that's where the twenty-five percent came from, based on the studies that were in that report. I think it's too much. I think where we're going with it, maybe that that's the high end of it, but it was a five car, a five parking spot reduction per car sharing car that we would have in the building. Is what it was.
I think, um, I, I completely agree. I mean, it doesn't make sense to have less realistically, less than one parking space per residential unit. This reduction, this is a reduction from our current standard, uh, to one space per unit, which I like. But maybe it makes sense to justify that reduction by having the car share be the necessity to get to one, not from one to less than one.
And maybe as a consequence, you maybe need fewer car share spaces because of that. Spatial purpose. I mean, this is the kind of thing that, a minute more research and time, you figure out.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm working on it. We can just use, we can, we can assume that that is just a placeholder right now, and then the direction is to maintain the one and use it as a justification for that one.
I'll feel more comfortable with that.
Chuck, do you have a comment?
Yeah, isn't our existing code right now a one car per apartment and one third car per bedroom? So if it is, then we're talking about a reduction of one and two-thirds cars. Uh, one and two-thirds cars down the road. And that's, and that's, that's a few better.
Yes.
But I, I, I just want to, Heather, it's, it's one and two-thirds cars that we're reducing. It's just a number, just. But it's not one per apartment. That wasn't.
Right now, it's not one per apartment. It's, it, we're going to look to.
Hmm?
Right now, I think it's one.
I'm sorry, what our code says or what is in here?
Our code right now. One plus a third of the space per bedroom. Right, so business districts, right, so a business, so, so an apartment in this only district, the minimum amount of parking that is required for a one-bedroom is the minimum, is two spaces.
So how do we?
For a one-bedroom?
Yes.
Also, how do we, let me just, when that code was put in place, the train station was there. And I, I think that part of the rationale, the lower, is you have another train station. But it was always there. So where, how do we get from two down to one? If the conditions, context has changed. What's the rationale for that?
The updated standards and the IT and the analysis, they need to come up with the engineering standards. Or is that, that particular standard for multifamily dwellings and business districts was added in nineteen seventy-seven? Right, and so since nineteen seventy-seven, there have been several updates to the IT, the Institute of Transportation Engineers Parking Standards Manual. The most recent, twenty nineteen.
Is what we're basing this.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, just to understand the math of the current code. You said it's one per unit plus one third.
Plus a third for each bedroom.
Right, so if you have a one-bedroom, it's one and a thirty parking spaces, no?
And you can't have.
I understand, but, but, but on the, on the whole, since we're not building one unit, we're building.
Yes, you would do the math.
You do the math, so, so, so in reality, on a, on a multi-family, it's not two per one-bedroom unit, it is one point three three.
Yes.
Okay, so the reduction isn't as great
Correct.
on a larger scale.
In the aggregate.
Yeah.
In the aggregate.
Right, so, because it, it felt like for a second like it was a big lead from.
It's not a big lead.
Yeah, okay.
It's two-thirds, Ben. Not, that's not.
If there's a two-bedroom.
Yeah, well, they don't have any one-bedroom.
But they say. And studios.
In studios.
Studios, one and two bedrooms.
Yeah.
What's the requirement for a studio?
What, one?
Great, so there's, there's no reduction.
Correct, there's three students.
Great.
All right.
Okay, um, the next section, excuse me, how much of.
He did.
Yeah, so, electric vehicles, the same, rebuilding is the same. The.
And these are not just, this is nitpicky, just I read an article about today. Electric vehicles, you're not proposing to have, these are going to be general EV chargers, not just for like Teslas.
Correct.
Right, okay.
So one of the new elements of this version has to do with an energy standard. Um, that is, uh, point twelve, item twelve, after rebuilding. The intent was, we all just want a met-carbon-zero building that's built and sourced by electricity, there's no carbon. It's engineered timber. We really want to create some sort of efficiency standard so that the building envelope has efficiency and conservation tied to it. So we have yet to come up with that standard, or what that efficiency standard should be, we're still working on it. But that is a new element to this code that wasn't there before.
I love it.
Fortunately.
Well, I like just that, you know, again, we talked about this previously, but it's the idea that the special permit, there is something special about what's being proposed here. It's, it's a, it's a higher standard, and in exchange for that, you're giving something or two things ultimately, right, a reduction in parking and height, and that's sort of the, you know, what, what we're willing to think about doing, and I like that holding it to our standard is, is the goal here, and also the justification.
So one thing is where you, where we say, um, all buildings shall be designed and constructed, no gas or fossil-fueled fired equipment or appliances. Designed, so like the architect in there, in there can't use gas in their office? Or oil in their office? That's ridiculous. We can't say that your office, if, if the architect has an office in a building that they don't own, that's run by oil, we're saying this can't be built here?
This.
You need to go rent an office where it says designed, that's what's bothering me.
Where are you?
In A here, eleven A, where it says all buildings greater than five thousand square feet will be designed and constructed with no gas or fossil fuel, but like, you mean the inside of the building cannot be utilizing?
The new building can't.
The new building, yes.
Okay, to me, when I looked at designed, it meant to me like the architects who were designing it might be using fossil fuels to design it.
Not, not these architects.
Well, but you know what I mean, like if they are in a building that burns oil, so you, I think there's just a different.
Language is redundant, just take out design, construct is what we care about. I mean, who cares how they got to the design, it's
Right.
what are you building?
Right. Does that make sense?
Yeah, fine.
Okay.
They have to walk to their team meetings. They can't drive to their team meetings.
There's fossil fuel. They could have an EV car.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so we get down to fourteen.
So on fourteen, I have a, a thought, fourteen A. It says the scale masking character of those projects shall not negatively alter the community character. I would say shall endeavor to minimally alter the community character, because you know, I think that's going to be a sticking point, that shall not negatively alter the community character, and I think there should be some more flexibility afforded to the governing bodies. Well.
Well, it's subjective. I know what we're trying to get at is that it has to fit within the town, but it's subjective and
And broad.
And broad, and you know, to me, architecture is not supposed to stay stuck in the past, as we've said, this sport is supposed to be innovative and move to the future, which could someone could say have a different community character potentially. It doesn't mean it can't fit, like if you walk around our downtown now, we have lots of buildings that don't really fit together and aren't super attractive, some of them, but, um, it's just very subjective, so how do we?
That's why I'm trying to give you some flex, you or whatever the governing bodies has a little bit more flexibility. I'm thinking less about the, the the design, but more about the scale and the massing, um, just if you're comfortable with this language, that's fine, but I, I, I think it, it's a little, to me, the read is a little too rigid.
Very absolute.
Yes.
Yeah, no, it could be, you know, one percent native each versus a hundred percent native each, I think the language.
Cover a lot of, gives you a little bit more.
At the same time, um, it is very subjective.
Yeah.
And that gives a lot of leeway. And so what I would ask is, should there be some criteria you attach to this language? Because it actually gives, it's like a it's, it's like open season. Anybody can come in and, and claim that it, that it fits within the community. And without any criteria, it's kind of hard to sort of counter that, like, you say, well, wait a minute, because X, Y, and Z actually doesn't, we need to conform with some parameters in order to meet that, that objective, and I think that this is a legitimate, public. that objective, and I think that this is a legitimate public criteria objective that needs to be somehow somehow defined, and I don't think that we in anywhere in our code, anywhere, that we actually done that. We've only been able to do it, in my experience, through job money, working with the developer. And you know, this is what we want, and this is what we think is good for the town, and developers quite often will want to accommodate us because, you know, they would like to build the town the way the town would like it to be, and turns out that it works out for them. So I don't, I mean, I don't know how you, I don't want to say, well, it's gotta be like Italian Renaissance.
Right, right, right.
It's much more difficult than than that.
I agree.
One one thing you may want to consider is that this application will go to the architectural review board twice. Once on a referral basis for a report and recommendation early in the process, and then again, building permit stage where the A R B will get granular with architectural and design aspects. And maybe this section is on more solid footing when we're tying into some of the site plan elements that you'd like to see that are somewhat unique to this section of town. Um, and stay there and let the A R B do its job with respect to architecture.
Yeah, I'm I'm more concerned about, I think, same thing that the Eldon might be concerned about, which is scale and massing. That's what I'm actually more concerned about.
Right. A R B, yeah, that's their wheelhouse.
Truthfully, my concern is is to make it more, this, the 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 suggested language is to make it
broader.
Less subject to litigation. You know, I I think the 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 design, the scale, the architecture will have its day, right? I mean, there there's going to be an opportunity, yeah, multiple days, um, and so it's not so much to talk about the height or the scale, but more to say, if something is approved, and then someone can come back and say, look, your special permit requirement says it shall not negatively alter the community character, this undoubtedly alters the community character. Right, in its scale.
I'm sure we're not the.
It's inescapable.
Right, anything could pretend, right.
Anything.
We can't be the first town, though, to be sitting here debating this, right? I feel like this has got to be such a common problem that municipality space when looking to develop land, so I'd be curious to know if there are other special permits out there where this was specifically addressed and what the language was to be more and to to address the concerns that we're having here, which, you know, one person can look at the building and say, oh, this fits perfectly. Another person could be like, this is an eyesore and I hate, and it doesn't go at all.
Well, in terms of that, sorry, but that's. But I was gonna say that when the A R B looks at a project, you know, again, twice, at the referral stage where it's more conceptual and it's giving feedback so that the applicant can be sure that when it gets at the finish line and is applying for a building permit, no surprises, we know what they know what they have to deliver. When the A R B is looking at the project, they're not looking at zoning, they're not looking at massing in terms of wow, it's built to the maximum allowable height, that's not within their scope of their review. They're dealing with more like, oh, there's a very large blank wall there that is unattractive and out of character with the buildings around it.
Much more aesthetic.
That's the type of thing that the A R B, not, we don't like it because it's.
Yeah, and the 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 language is similar or not too similar or dissimilar.
We got away from that about five years ago with an amendment, and now it's a little bit broader, and some of that language is still in there.
Yeah.
Well, then tell me again what you wanted it to say.
Sorry, the scale masking character of a proposed project shall not, shall, excuse me. The scale masking character of a proposed project shall endeavor to minimally alter the community character of the area.
Yeah, I asked for the comp plan comes in as a.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that the co- I mean, our comprehensive plan does say, what, in college, all? It talks about community character.
It says maintaining character for putting the density of development where you have the services to support the development.
Uh, yeah, I think it actually says centered around houses too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it also.
So how do you reconcile those two things?
Exactly the way you're talking about it, right?
This is it.
So to the point of, you know, trying to define a standard and come up with a standard for how we measure, you know, a detriment or not a detriment to community character, we can certainly look at other codes and see if another community has sort of solved this problem.
Or language that we like.
Right, exactly, um, but this is not a, um, this is not a standard that's unique. It's, um, in the C B A area variance, um, the factors that the zoning board has to review. One of the factors is the variance can't be a detriment to the to the neighborhood, to the character of the neighborhood. So it's something that with every area variance application that the zoning board hears, they they sort of struggle with this as well, right? It's very fluid, open, subjective language. Um, I think part of it is because each community is so different and each community has its own character, right? If they're trying in different areas, so. Right, exactly, yeah, that's a good point, too.
So I mean, is there something like, look, to take it to an extreme, right? If we put a twelve story building there, big square, that's obviously gonna not gonna negatively affect the community character. Should we, I mean, is there something where we want to put an absolute height limit on to say there's no way, should this ever exceed? But I'm saying in this, like, to try to help define this.
In another section of the legislation, maximum.
I know, I'm just trying to figure out, when you're talking about design, like, when you're talking about shall not negatively alter community character. You know, it's kind of one of those, like, you know, when you see it, but then reasonable minds can differ, so it's it's, this is a hard one.
But it sounds like a hard one for the A R B.
Shall comply with the goals in the comprehensive plan? Is that too?
I think by, I think by enacting the legislation and creating a special permit, you're doing that. Um, but if you look at what the A R B is required to consider sites and arrangement of doors and windows, um, openings, breaks. Size and shape of all wall planes, heights of horizontal building features. Looking at all of the architectural details and making sure that it works, works for the building and it works with what's around the building.
Okay, so and is it just taking this out completely and referring to the A R B?
I think A could be taken out.
Uh, I wonder if it shouldn't stay, this is a statement of intent. Because it does need criteria, we have the A R B to sort of backstop this and trust them to do it, they seem to, my experience, they do it very well. And but it's maybe important to get that statement of intent in here, not just for the message downstream to the process but the message to the community, we care about this stuff.
Like in the purpose upfront?
Because this, where it's located, it's a special permit standard, so it's something that the applicant has to meet in order to get their permit. So if we want to just be at the statement of intent, then we should move it up to the the purpose and.
Well, the way it's written is a statement of intent, because it's the criteria attached to it, so it's something more than a statement of intent.
But it is a requirement that needs to be met in a special permit, and if you take it to the top of the document, then then it doesn't, you know, when you're submitting your special permit application, you don't have to.
It's just need to stay here, that's what I meant, I mean, I'm.
I I I like, I like Eldon's language, to be very honest with you, because it's a little bit softer than negatively.
That's fine.
Remind me what it was again?
Right, endeavor to minimally alter.
And unless I'm mistaken, this is not the first time in our existing code where this language appears. I mean, it appears in statements of intent in other sections of the zoning code, so it's, there's nothing new about this. I'm not saying that it shouldn't be in this one, but, um, it already appears to serve its purpose well in the existing code with the help of the A R B.
I don't see any inconsistency with the A R B's jurisdiction, it's almost like a sort of a gate. As a gatekeeping function.
Do we need to mention the A R B in here, or no, it's just operational law, that's how.
You know, one thing we should say, there's al- already a lot of procedural content in, um, section four thirty of the code for all special permits and how they work, how they get processed. Um, and and that is baked in already, we haven't repeated all of that, none of the special permit provisions. Just makes reference to the earlier ones and tell you how to do it.
I would like to say that the insertion of minimally altered is concerning language from my perspective as residents. And respectfully, the comp plan is bigger than everybody who's sitting on the town board now, it's a much more important document. Um, and all of here, personally, I think we should not insert the language minimally altered in that sentence. I don't have the draft, so I don't know exactly what the sentence says or where it's located, but that's concerning the language. I believe in evolution, and I think every community goes for it, but I think that that's opening a pathway for a lot more changes than I believe this community is interested in in terms of development.
I hear you, Maggie, what we're kind of trying to work through is to say, when it says shall not negatively alter the community character, that's so subjective and basically almost anything could be argued that it's altering community character, what if? So we're trying to find a bridge between any kind of development, right? And the comprehensive plan.
The problem here is it's going above and beyond existing and well established zoning, which is the struggle. I mean, you have it, you have a thirty five high maximum that's been that maximum, it's not, if you're a downtown area for quite a few years.
You know, the challenge is, I'm sorry, I haven't been.
No, I'm just saying that, you know, I'm not saying everything has to stay the two stories, I it, but you know, you you can move forward and you can move forward in a way that encourages reasonable development, that is believable, that fits our community, that works in our small town and that gives everybody a chance to, um, I I shouldn't say everybody, I mean, everybody who's got property down there a chance to equally develop their property according to those standards, but you start doing the stuff where it's a lot bigger, a lot denser, a lot more, a lot less thick, and other people are going to be disadvantaged and it becomes an unending discussion.
So I I can I just, I I think all those are fair points, I want I want to clarify. I'm not trying to, my my suggestion with this specific language is not about height or massing or density or anything specifically with sort of the 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 size of the building necessarily. It's more about the way that language is written and the standard that's being set that needs to be met for the special permit because there could be an argument that leaving a site vacant for the next fifty years untouched will negatively alter the character of the community because more plants will grow and, you know, like, could be, you know, rodents and and who knows what, so it's just, it's so rigid, what does not negatively alter the community? I mean, the 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 character of the community, almost by definition, this will alter the character of the community. It's it's a vacant store and a vacant lot that has some overgrown plants on it, it, that that community will be altered, undoubtedly. Um, was was it negatively altered? I mean, who's to say, so that's why I'm trying to suggest, it's not, my issue with this language has nothing to do with the A R B or with height necessarily or design or building material or color or shape, just that 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 language is so rigid that anyone can claim.
Impossible to comply with that.
Yeah.
No, that makes.
That's that, that's the concern, I I think there is a time and a place to have a discussion about height. And.
Everything else.
And everything else, I just think that that language is a, is just a little bit, i- in invites litigation.
What about flipping it? Instead of couching it in the negative, say something, we have some of this in the purpose and intent section about why the, why the special permit's being created, but what about achieving? The town board makes a finding that it actually achieves betterment. Catch the language around that concept.
Interesting, that's interesting.
Yeah, implied in the whole process, I mean, right, I mean, why don't the town board do something that wasn't for the better?
But again, going back to that distinction between what's the purpose and intent, and that's all language that we're aspiring to versus something that's actually a requirement, a box for the town board to check.
And also just, yeah, to say the com- maybe to reference it back to the comprehensive plan too.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
And the and the comp plan came from so I I I think if 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 we're gonna go I think we have to go to the community. With.
Well, we are, this is, we're gonna have public hearings and believing we're gonna go to the community.
Well, but like, for example, wouldn't it be great to go to the community, kind of like now, probably, you know, what what's good, and then you write the law for that. Rather than try to fit everything into the law that we don't know what's gonna fit in.
So you're suggesting, Chuck, that you advance U D with design and then back to it with the zone?
Back to law.
Well, this way, we're kind of saying what we want, and they have to design around it as opposed to
Well, well, well.
Completely fitting it into a design.
It it's kind of like the law you're looking at is kind of matching forms, that we're trying to work into a special use program without, without 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 divulging the forms and everything else before, so trying to work around it. But it always seems to me that if there was a consensus or some kind of some kind of 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 greenness, where we want to close this thing, and a little more detail, like Tom mentioned, some kind of form, a a form that we all can agree on, then we can write any law you want, don't have to worry about it ever having a problem.
I think you could probably go either way, and, uh, there, I guess, reasons to include one versus the other. It seems to me that the we talked about this before on the planning board, I think it's actually in a memo somewhere, that you can leave with zoning if you are, if you, if you open the flexibility for design and plan. And one of the things we were concerned about is that there were so many specifics in the original with regard to design and planning, then it didn't leave room for Chuck's, uh, uh, notion that it's really, really important to understand, you know, what you're getting before you lock it in to legislation.
Right.
So our caution was that, you know, let's, let's try and separate the two. And if you want to leave with zoning, you can do that, or you can leave with design, if you want to do that. You know, there's a big project, I won't mention it again because I talk about it too much, but there's a big project where actually zoning was held in advance until the design caught up. The way I remember, and they came back into zoning to be sure that everything was, you know, put together in a way that can be won. So, yeah, I I think you go either way, it seems to me we're on this road now, maybe it's best to stay on this road, but be cautious. Be careful to leave room for a look see at actually what you are going to get and give yourself room to maneuver.
And I thank you, I really think we know where we're getting. It's always there. A lot of effort, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of stuff has been put down that we're writing a law around. So there is a, there is a design or even a site.
My 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 point is don't write the law around that.
Yeah.
That's why.
Yeah, so what do we want the law written around is, is my.
Well, I think you write it around what we believe are the are the positive benefits of the community that zoning can deliver, and I think we're talking about, you know, two more stories and a couple of other things that then design fits its way into.
And don't, you know, we can't lose sight of the fact that there is a housing compact that is proposed out of Albany that could, I think, I have to clock the exact mileage, but I think the way it's written now for T O D would require any one acre property to actually have a minimum of fifty units on it. Not thirty, it's fifty, because I think we're less than thirty miles from the top of the Bronx from the bottom of the test. So it would require fifty units within a mile, so I think we need to keep that in mind too, that at at some point, we're gonna be mandated potentially that we need to do something. So if we can try to figure out a great way to get something done that will. Fit within that, but that we're okay with as a community, I'd much rather do that. Than than have them come in and rezonate for us without looking at anything. So I think we need to keep that in mind.
Out there that says thirty three on it. Some kind of. Concrete thing out there. I've seen it before.
Every acre parcel has to rezonate fifty.
So you need to be at least one acre.
Within a mile of the train station.
You need to be at least one, one acre and others.
But Lisa, the legislation says a twenty five minimum. Doesn't say, it says twenty five.
No, 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 that was the old legislation. It's worse now.
But Lisa knows what it is.
I can guarantee you she does.
I've been, believe me, I'm on like ten working groups on this.
Yeah, I've heard.
That was the old legislation.
I thought twenty five was the old legislation and they they changed it for minimum.
But you know, us talking about what it is and isn't is gonna change what it is.
Yeah.
So it's coming. We have to address it. And I think that that's what we're trying to do here is on our terms.
But this site is thirty three thousand.
I think that's right. Minimum, the minimum is thirty three thousand, so.
Okay. All right.
Thank you. Thank you for this.
Of course. What if?
So we took out. Part about landscapes.
Yeah, there was a, there was a design standard that said that there shall include, there shall include landscape side and maria. Especially when adjacent to lower density residential presence. There are no lower density residential uses around this site, so.
Owns bordering a train track, so I don't know that we're having a yard right there.
Street walls, what about street walls came out?
Yeah, E two. One and two.
So some of that content is coming out.
Yeah, there was a.
It's not, it's not in that. It's not in Hokel's speech. It's in the legislation.
The provision said that street walls occupying less than seventy five percent of street facing linear frontage. Within ten feet of the property line, shall be allowed to extend to a maximum allowable building height. We took that out because we felt that it was removing the discretion that the town board had to require less. Than sixty foot building height first as well. To sixty feet, but it says that the town board can lower that curve, but that's the maximum. Town board can require something less if there's a basis to do so. And we felt this took that discretion away from you.
So that's the one to ask, actually, not not about the wall. But in C, where it says building height shall not exceed sixty feet or four stories. But the town board may further limit the height. So, but it doesn't give like parameters. So this is legislation, but you're saying when they come to us with a site plan, we can say, no, no, we don't. It can't be sixty feet. It's not, it's not in keeping with the.
We don't like it.
Neighborhood, it has to be fifty feet or whatever.
Based on the design that you're presented, if you feel that by going up to sixty feet, it's just completely out of character.
And we can just do that.
Yes, it says to ensure development compatible with the area in which the NG zero projects located, the town board make further limit the height.
Okay.
So how did you get to sixty feet? Where did that come from? What do you mean you talk about? Where did it come from? It's in the, it's in the text of the, honestly, it's in the text. You guys worked on it. Did it come?
It comes from the applicant, because that that that's.
Yeah, so so why are we? Just one of those things where now we're sort of like legislating designer, why don't we have an independent. Idea about what the appropriate height is. Why are we writing in this particular stipulation that the town board has the option to? Push back on, but we'll come in with a a project which is sixty feet. I mean, if the if the applicant said, you know, I want six stories instead of four, would that be what the text would say?
So the town board had the discretion upfront to require changes before starting this process. But remember, we're also in a secret process too. So there's a visual impact analysis that's gonna have to be done to study the impacts of this legislation. Going up to a maximum sixty feet. So there is, this is not, you know, without any sort of review or checks or balances.
But why, I understand that. You're not answering the question. Why is it in there? I understand that you're gonna go through all these reviews and eventually it might be fifty feet, it might be sixty five feet, who knows? Why is it in there? Because no place, no place in our code anywhere that I'm aware of are we anywhere near sixty feet. And all of a sudden, we have this as an actual proposal that the town board is putting in a draft legislation. I don't understand, I don't understand that.
Is that true?
Well, the short answer is that the height, that number comes from the original proposed zoning petition. And that was the number that they, we haven't changed this. That's the board's prerogative.
That's my point. I understand where it came from, actually. I mean, clearly I understand how this stuff works, right? I understand where it came from. My point is, how did it get to this point? And maybe the board hasn't addressed this particular issue yet. But this is one of those things that, to Chuck's point, this is one of those things that we really need to, I think, the town board. Planning board currently has not a lot to say on this. You guys need to figure out what you really want this thing to say and like before you put it out to the public. And taking something like sixty feet and putting it out there. I mean, I, what do I know? You know, I live on the other side of town, but I think you're gonna get, I think you're gonna get a real pushback on this. And there's no reason to go through that process. And I think sixty feet's wrong. I mean, I'm not, I I can't believe that anybody around this table actually thinks sixty feet is good for North Korea. Or maybe anywhere in town, but certainly not North Korea. So I, this is one of those areas where I really think you guys, I think you guys ought to just nip it in the bud. Just because of the, just because the applicant drafts this text doesn't mean it has to be your text. You know that, that's part of the city. This is one of those things that I think you need to deal with.
So I think one of the things to look at, so. We definitely don't want something that's straight sixty feet all across. But if you're have, you're building something and it's ADA compliant, you need a. An elevator.
They need an elevator penthouse or.
Right, so the elevator goes higher than the.
Not that much.
Then the sea, then the floor of the highest. It has to, it has to be able to go up.
No, I.
So I don't know what. I don't know what that minimum height would be.
It's not sixty feet. You have a hydraulic elevator, if it's a, if it's a geared elevator, then you have a penthouse which is on around twelve fourteen feet. I don't know what it is.
What's the standard height for a four story building?
Right, so great question, right? The, we should make a distinction between, you know, number of floors and 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 height of buildings.
It's me, I guess I'm, I've, I'm trying to understand, is it so egregious to sixty feet? You seem so offended by it, so I want to understand it because I'm, I'm more of an incremental changes person myself. So if you think it's so over the top, but we can agree that a four story building is reasonable. What is the standard for four stories?
Depends on the building, right?
The style.
And the ceiling height.
Commercial oftentimes will be, you know, fifteen feet on the ground floor.
Right.
And then maybe, you know, ten to twelve feet for residential, you know.
So you're gonna have a forty five?
You could have a forty five, fifty foot four story building. And it would be reasonable. But I, so that's a great question, something to think about. You know, I I think Tom, the point, you know, I've discussed this, I think it's a very good one. It, it's a good question to ask, but why is sixty in here? Why is four stories in here? These, these are good questions. I mean, the answer to some extent is because that's what the applicant.
Well, I know that's the answer.
No, I I know.
Question is why is it still?
Right, that that that's where where it originated, although it originated from the applicant at that height and and that number of stories. I think because of the history, in the recent history of the town discussions, you know, if if they've come with a seven or a twelve story building. It wouldn't be in here, but they wouldn't have come with it at the beginning, right? And so I do think. Couple of things, one. What's in here and with the language that is in here is is a limit. And you can only go down from there at the discretion. And I think. The ability to have some flexibility for design. Is is a good idea. You know, this is sort of, pardon the pun, but a ceiling on height to put in here. And then you get to play with it or whatever relevant bodies make the decision. The question of why is sixty feet needed for four stories? I think it's a very legitimate question. I don't. I I don't think, my guess is that.
I designed these things.
Yeah, you don't need it. And I, and and so it's a legitimate question, where, why, where do sixty feet come from? Why is with sixty feet the request? And. You know, if it's to accommodate, I mean, an elevator bulkhead, I mean, that that goes above the height limit anyway, doesn't it, in our town code? It does, right? That doesn't count against height to begin with, you know, mechanical. But I don't believe it elevator.
And do we care so much how many floors it is, like how many stories? Don't we care more about the overall height?
Yes, we do. We don't measure stories.
So, yeah, we could, I think, take out four stories, because if someone can fit five stories in fifty feet, we might say, fine. But if, you know what I mean?
What's the harm in taking the provision out?
I'm sorry, the code, our town code currently has.
Stories empty.
So I don't know if sixty is the right number.
It's so arbitrary.
But is a planning and a policy decision for force to come to.
I, you know, I I guess you can do whatever you want. I mean, we know this, right? I mean, you guys, you find a way to justify it in the language of your life. You could go to sixty feet if you want.
We're not trying to do that though. We're here at the table and we're learning.
No, I know that. Well, I'm not accusing anybody of any of that. I'm just trying to say that why start at sixty feet? Because you can go to sixty feet if you want to. As soon as you go to sixty feet, I mean, everything's a negotiation. As soon as you go to sixty feet, you're gonna see sixty.
Yeah.
And then you have to fight your way back from sixty feet.
Yeah, that's not.
Just don't put it in.
I'm sitting here, can I just say something? We're not asking for sixty feet. What we submitted is an average of fifty feet. So we're we're not asking for sixty. We we didn't say, but the reason I think it says sixty is because the average of fifty, there's a point that's likely over fifty. Because the roof is pitched and the highest point is the elevator and it pitches down.
So if you, Jeff, if you take out the elevator.
So it's sixty feet. No, it's not. It it's an average of fifty. I don't know the exact.
So if you took out the elevator, right, which Jen, you just said doesn't count for height purposes. So let's say that, forget the elevator, which has to go higher. What do you, what, just out of curiosity, what would that, you may not have the answer, what would be the average of that without the?
I don't know, I'm not the.
Yeah.
Right, but I can tell you the part of the height of the building is the first floor ceiling heights, I think, are fifteen feet. To give that retail space, that restaurant, concept of ceiling height, so that it's an invited ice retail space. So then it rents and it and it's a good space.
But what Tom is saying is you can still do that and then have.
I I just need to say something. I've been sitting here all night and talking. This man so far has called my architects, threatened them, told them to resign. He's given his opinion. I just want to go on the record. This is supposed, no, I'm not, so stop.
You stop.
Wait, everybody stop.
Stop talking about a resident.
Wait.
I'm not talking, he called our architect, threatened him, told him to resign. All night he's been sitting here talking and giving him his opinion.
He and I are talking to each other, so what? You're two that are talking. Calm down, don't insult a resident.
But we shouldn't be calling architects or developers.
Talking to another professional about something.
We aren't, we aren't, we aren't calling anybody good if you have a resident.
No, I I, man, you know, I can't stop you from, you know, there's freedom.
He's a professional and I I I studied his work. I mean, I could talk to him about his work, so I don't want to talk about that. What I do want to talk about is this, we have a limit, a height limit right now of thirty five feet. In every business district, in every business retail district, up and down the hill, every property can build to thirty five feet. I think that's a good number to start at, if you want to start negotiating up or down, but I say thirty five feet is a great place to start.
Well, thirty five feet.
That's probably a little low if we want to increase density a little bit.
Try to put fifty and put a parking underneath.
So. Okay, thanks, got it. All right, so I think we need to look, if you, I'd be interested, just out of curiosity, if you found out, if you took out the.
There's no reason to us to be here. We get interrupted from speaking, so we can continue. Why should we sit in here with all due respect?
Because you're asking a lot of the community.
Wait, no, 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 we're not.
Again, I get interrupted from speaking. We're invited to come to a meeting, we're invited to present the project. We constantly get interrupted.
Well, I'd want you here, and I think the rest of this team wants you here.
Property, we don't have to build a building, we can put in a retail tenant, we can do anything we want. We're happy to sit here and go through it, but if we're gonna get interrupted and continue to have this, it's not worth it. We can put in a Dollar General.
Jeff, I would like you to stay here. I would like you to stay here, please. Because we have questions and we're trying to talk about this.
Because we are. Everyone take a beat. Everyone take a beat, please. I'm asking respectfully, it's. You also have to understand, we are a community, these are members of our community. This is a public meeting, it's a work session, but it's a public meeting. They have as much of a right to be here as anyone. And I don't devalue anyone's opinion, okay? So please, can we just respectfully coexist? We're having, this is a professional setting, this is a professional meeting, this is an exchange of ideas. And me personally, it's very important to me as the junior new member of the town board. That this is a collaborative process that takes into account that this could get sold to somebody and become something else. But also, what does my community want? It's important to me that I hear from the members of my community too. So please, can we just be respectful to each other? Take a minute, get it together and work through this, please. And I don't want you to leave, I don't want you to feel disrespected. I appreciate that you're both here. But I also have to respect the members of my community that are here as well, okay? There's competing interests and we all have to work together.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. I appreciate you sitting back down.
Um, okay, so I think, look, we need to go back to the town board. And maybe you guys can, yeah, I mean, have conversations, but you can go up there too. I think we need to go back to the town board too, and I'd like to hear from the planning board as to kind of thoughts about the sixty feet. I mean, we're not gonna make that decision here, but I understand that it's something that we need to look at. I would propose, I mean, I don't care about the stories, I care more about the height.
Yeah.
The overall height. So. We need to look at that. So maybe just put brackets around that for now.
Yeah, and and maybe there's, there's language which you don't have to hash out now that gives some. I I think what what the, what the owner was suggesting is that. Building itself is not all sixty feet, right? But that there there are points where 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 it goes above fifty. But it sounds like fifty is like, like it's more architectural than than it is, you know, necessity. And so maybe there's some flexibility that that can be built in for better design or something. Where, but 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 there is sort of a, where the height is lower. In feet, maybe it's fifty. But with the allowances for, you know, in certain places per your discretion, you know, penetration of that height limit.
We, if I may too. We have a definition of how you measure height that has to do with the averages. And the finished grade, the the roof at the the slant of the roof, there, it's a formula. It is not a story basis. We have stories in the code, but the real measurement is a formula based on average. Height, swivel roof at the midpoint in relation to the finished grade. Which is probably why it is taller than fifty. I can't answer whether it is the architectural details that are causing the building to be taller. I can't answer whether it is the architectural details that are causing the building to be taller than fifty. But the ab, the floor plan of the higher first floor, then you have high residential floors, they're above fifty.
So. If I'm hearing you correctly, height is defined in our current code, is an average. It's not, uh, at the very top, not story, but it's not like at the tippy top, it has to be lower than, it's an average.
Correct.
So when the developer is saying it's an average of fifty feet, that's under the definition of height in our code?
I don't know if they use the definition of our code to come up with the height of this concept. I can't answer that.
They did.
I, I cannot answer that.
We're trying to have this conversation, please try not to interrupt. There will be time, raise your hand, I will call on you, but try not to interrupt, especially.
I, I cannot verify how, based on the information that has been submitted, they calculated the height. Okay, I know what their average height is, I know what height, I can look on the plan and I can scale it out. That is about it. We have a code that the building inspector will use to make sure that it is compliant with the height measurement. Of whatever we put in this code. A building right now comes in at thirty-five feet. It will average out at thirty-five feet in accordance with our measurements.
So that's not to say, I don't think it's to say, that as a consequence of, that's the way we measure things. That the top of the building can go as high as we want, so. After we've wanted to go, as long as you average thirty-five feet.
Well, yeah, they have to end up with the average at the midpoint.
No, I understand, but it can still go up higher.
Well, and again.
And that does.
To sixty feet.
And it doesn't include the, um, and it doesn't include the elevator, right? The elevator ring?
We don't know that.
It doesn't. Okay, it does not include the elevator.
What'd you say about the not to exceed?
I- i- in our code right now, it's a not to exceed thirty-five feet.
Average, average.
It does not say average.
But that's how, that's how the height is defined as an average.
Well, we're gonna be going down.
Okay, so we'll look at that. So we could say not to exceed a different feet other than sixty.
Yes, you could.
And if the average falls below, if the average is equal or below that, then.
For the purpose.
Yeah, put brackets in it.
You know, just put brackets in.
It also sounds like there's, this is a, a fight over something that isn't really at all, right? Sixty feet is probably not what this is, and there's no point in having that, that discussion, because we should get a little bit more detail as to. And to Tom's point. The proposal that's out there is not necessarily where we wanna be writing the code to either.
Yes.
We should think about, um. You know, what is appropriate, uh, for here, uh, what, what, what is an appropriate height for the area, what is an appropriate height for the density that's. Uh, desired.
Yeah.
Um, and then also there was referencing here, I don't know if it got into it or hasn't come up yet, but the shadow study.
Yeah, that's in there, we haven't gone to it yet.
Which is, uh, relevant.
So I would say put brackets around that for now. We have to come back with a number, but it's gonna be lower than sixty.
The board's gonna finalize its draft memo, the referral response back to the town board. Um, and right now, height wasn't addressed in the current draft, but if you could unpack that and, and deal with that in some.
I thought we said sixty was too large.
Well, i- i- yeah, if you could unpack that, because when we introduce the legislation for a public hearing, you can have a lot.
I understand, so you're, you're suggesting that we, when you say unpack, we work out and we can pick appropriate numbers.
A little bit, yes, a little bit more, so that we can be helpful to, to the town.
We're, we're not gonna have a blank when it goes out for public. There'll be a number in there for, for public consideration. I'm just saying now, as we're looking at it, this working group and we want the planning board to look at it more, the town board wants, you know, we wanna look at it more. So, I was just saying, put that in there now, so we know it's bracketed, and if anyone sees it, they don't freak out. And, um, to know that it's a, a number that's still under discussion. Okay, Chuck, do you have something you want to say?
It's just, everybody, just to be clear. He's right that it's fifty feet. And, and, and if you look at all the drawings that are out there, you just, all, all the numbers are on there, it's a fifty-four foot. It's very, 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 very peak of his roof, fifty-four. And anything in between that from fifty.
Its averages is down to fifty. Yeah.
Fifty feet.
Okay.
I mean, so it's not, then, it's no smoke there, it's for real. He's at fifty feet.
So it's, but the, but the absolute height is not sixty, you're saying?
Definitely not sixty.
Okay.
To be more realistic, where accurate it's, it's fifty.
Okay.
Right, and that's what you just said, Jeff, that you averaged fifty. So why wouldn't, can we put a bracket fifty in there now?
Well, why?
Well, okay, go ahead, just, that's fine.
That's true.
Bracket blank.
Blank works too, that's.
I like the blank because many, you put something there.
So put a, put a, put a bracket blank in there. Put a bracket blank in there right now, and we'll, we'll, we'll figure that out. Okay, let's, why don't we move on?
It's eight o'clock, you guys wanna go past eight?
Well, can we just, we're very close, right?
Yeah, we're very close, let's just.
My share card back.
Okay. What?
We have, uh, a little change.
Yep.
Did we, we, we were talking about street wall, though. Did we, were we finished with that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Okay. Shadow study. So again, why is like fifteen, it's important, so don't anyone think it's not, why? Is that in the legislation and not in the procedures that anyone needs to follow?
Which one is that?
Fifteen.
Yeah. Well, what?
Like, why is that not in another, in the, our general code?
I think with every, it may not apply to every special permit, but because you're potentially considering. A higher height here than what other laws we allow, you know, generally in the code.
Okay. Okay.
So suggest that. Shadow studies and visual analysis are two different things. Um, and you might want to actually break from that. Visual analysis is sort of height and mass and how it works in a, with. In relation to the street, the buildings next to it and all that. Shadow study is something different, which is, as you know. The shadows are faster.
Tom, what would you change? Cause to me, I thought it is separated here, a shadow study and visual.
That's fine with me.
Authority to modify any of the. We've been talking about, based on the standard that we've built in here.
Okay.
So, talks about, um. Basically a balancing test, um, departure versus value to the community and.
Yeah, I mean, given that it says consistent with the goals of the comprehensive plan to better serve the public health, safety and welfare. I'm okay with that. Everybody else?
Alright, let's advance to the application procedure.
I, I defer to you, I, I don't care how many copies, like that's. You know, I gotta defer to.
That's an outrage.
I did too many copies.
Yeah, I know there's disagreement between the planning board and the town board as to which portion of the authority. I, so that's the elephant in the room.
Well, yeah, so I'd like a little clarification on that, because I think earlier you said that. The, when it came to like your architecture review board and I mentioned also the zoning board. That the existing, uh, procedure provisions. In the special permit section of the code, right, right now. Actually starts with the zoning board. And then the zoning board, it either goes to the planning board as referral. Or if the planning board has a particular jurisdiction, it goes to the planning on that, in that zone. The planning board, actually, it goes to the planning board for cycle and approval. That's how I would read the code. It, it, I'm sorry, that's just a, we can come back to that, but my question is. You said, I thought, yeah, you said, and it also goes in the ARB, I thought.
I'm sorry. So I said tonight, or just wondering what you're.
So tonight, you mentioned these two agencies.
Yeah, yeah.
And as though, well, it's gonna go to the ARB anymore. But I don't see that as part of the procedures here.
So right now, in town code and what is concentrated in this draft. It is that the town board is the approval authority. Right now, the, uh, section four thirty. Makes the zoning board, as you said, the approval authority, unless. It's the town board or the planning board. The planning board has four or five special permits that has food and got. Cell towers, a few other. And the zoning board has the majority of, the town board, I think, has two and the other fourteen or whatever, how the math works, are the zoning board. Um, when the zoning board is the approval authority, the zoning board deals with all of the site plan issues. And that's true when the town board has special permit approval authority, like for workforce housing. It's always the approval authority that deals, addresses, decides all of the site plan issues. If there's an environmental permit, wetlands, steep slopes, those get peeled off and dealt with by the planning board. So that's the way the code has always worked.
Understood.
That's what we're proposing, how this would work.
So where, for example, does the ARB come in?
So the ARB, um, in any of these permits is going to get an application early on a referral.
Doesn't stipulate that here.
Oh, it got, it, it's not here, so that, that's section four thirty, eight through. N O R N, um, it deals with all of these standard procedures. All of them.
Right.
That's where it deals with ARB.
No, I, 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 I read it several times lately, lately. Cause I was concerned about this, trying to understand, you know, how this is gonna work. And, um. So, in this particular language though. The typical way in which it works in the language you're citing existing is that, in this case, the town board. Would be the approval authority. And if you refer back to that particular language, it could go to, it would, I think, a necessity, go to the planning board. It's, I think it says that in the language.
For, for renovation, for, yes.
Right. This language says it's their option to say. I don't think it says it.
It does, it says, uh, I, I saw that as well.
That's discretion.
It's too slow, sorry guys.
As a matter of fact, in our existing code, this is an extra thing that's not already provided for in our code. For the town board to invite the planning board, basically, to the table to. To meet jointly with the town board as part of the application.
So the, the underlying zoning with respect to the planning board, zoning board, ARB, how that all works. This is an extra provision, if the. Town board wants to invite one of those boards, in this case, the planning board, it says, for a meeting or series of meetings that they would have.
Joint discussion.
Do you like the ability to do that? I don't, I don't know why it needs to be in here, but that's why.
Yeah, they can do that anyway. It's a joint, a reminder that, you know, to, that there's that option.
If, if this gets approved, as written. The planning board has no say in this application, is that?
Other than referral of comment memo.
Right, right.
Yeah.
No authority.
Right.
No authority.
Right, I can't think of any environmental.
There really are no, no environmental issues on this piece of property, really. Little bit of drainage, but that's not a big deal.
Um, so, you know, I defer to you, I know that, uh. Process, uh.
Well, mine, I guess I don't know. I don't know why, again, why? What, why would one? Why would one make the choice to remove the planning board? Or not remove, I guess, I'll say, but not allow the planning board, have the planning board as. The review authority and site plan review authority on the project. Why not?
I'm gonna. Look to the town board members to answer that, but I'll give you my two cents. I think that, uh, a project in this location in downtown Hattler. Of, of this kind of scale. It's something, and, and the town board, I think. Reacted very positively to the green building aspects, the sustainability of this particular project. That was very important to the town. And I think there's a logic that says that the town board will stay with it, see the job done, make sure that it gets what it believes it's getting. Uh, and has ownership of, of, of the, of the process from start to finish.
So, uh, the planning board doing it with. Referral to, I guess that's the term the authorities in there. The town board. And getting their input. There is the suggestion that the planning board is not going to deliver the project. As well as the town board, like, I'm trying to understand, you know, what. Just because there's a will to do something, doesn't necessarily mean that you, you have the capability or the ability to do something, right? We all have the will to see this thing happen, not particularly this thing, but the thing, right? The development and the green building technology, all the things that I think are all hard. So the question is, how do we get there with the best result? Because we've all shared the same desire, I think. I don't think that it's, it would be the planning board's desire to come in and blow this thing up. We don't have the history of doing that, right? We have a history of helping make good things happen. So I was looking at, well, where are the skill sets to get this done? Right? Because these are actually very nuanced things we're talking about, in terms of design, massing, uh, site planning. They're very nuanced and they require, in my opinion, they require some real experience in knowing what's the right question to ask. And what's the right answer to listen for. And I think that you guys put together a planning board, I think, you guys put together a planning board. And every town does, try to anyway, puts together a planning board for that. Purpose and trust them to do that, and you trusted us to do that on just about, almost, I mean, we, we ended up. Doing substantial work, for instance, on Sunshine Oaks. We spent a lot of time on it. And we were involved not in just, well, gee, you know, where's the water go? We were involved in working out the building floor plan and how it works with respect to the neighbors and heights and all of that stuff. And working out, had that come out. That's an appropriate thing to communicate, not everybody loved it, but much everybody will, right, in any project. We ended up, uh, doing the mosque. Now, the mosque didn't go forward, but we spent a lot of time on the mosque. You guys said, okay. Zoning board's gonna do this, and the planning board's gonna do its things that be existing, and that was true for both of those projects. And I, those were both, I think, extremely important projects. And I thought we brought the, the more planning board brought the right set of skills and experience center, et cetera. In order to bring. In order to bring that to a conclusion, which is good for the whole town, right? And so, again, I'm just trying to come up with the, the logical rationale for taking it away from. Not taking it away, but not putting it in, right? The hands of the body which is constituted to do this. And does it, been doing it for years for you and saying, well, gee, you know, we think this is too important to give. To the planning board. And I would be looking for, okay, what are the skill sets beyond the will to do it? What are the skill sets that the town board brings to that responsibility? And does it really, is it really a rational thing to do? That's my pitch on that. And you guys don't have to say anything now, if you don't want, or you can say, you know, too bad for leaving, you know, tough luck.
No, no.
This is not, uh, please, understand, this is not a turf issue. I'm sure there are people, I know there are people who are saying, well, it's just the planning board wants to get hold of this thing. Just because they, you know, they, they have to do everything. I promise you that has nothing to do with this. It's trying to get the best outcome.
So in my view, you are right, that we. Appointed a planning board who we really respect and you all have. Different yet cohesive experiences that you bring to the board that. Does make a project better.
I'm sorry.
The taste of baseball teams notwithstanding. And I, I do think you're right also that, you know, I'm, I'm an attorney who happens to like design. But I certainly am not, you know, well-versed in, in a lot of things that are required for this. But that being said, I think the ultimate approval authority has never been. As far as I'm, I understand, with the planning board for something like this with a special permit, it's either been with the zoning board or the town board. Um, but does that preclude us from kind of referring it to the planning board?
No, there's a referral, mandatory referral. And then we actually have that language about, and it is a plusage, but additional, potential additional referrals to leverage that expertise.
But, sorry.
Because we would never, well, I, I can't speak for everyone. I would never, as a town board member, even presume to wanna cut out the planning board. You make things better and, and you have the expertise that we don't have. Maybe one day there is a town board member that will have that expertise. But I can tell you right now, no one on the town board has that now, but. You know, so I would never, I actually think the planning board needs to be an integral part of the process. I think this was really getting to who has the ultimate approval authority over it. But it doesn't mean that you would not be completely involved in helping to, to figure out site plan and everything else.
Let me just, uh, like, like, agree with Lisa, if what Ed is saying is true, that the under underlying. Provisions, procedural provisions in the special permit code. Apply, because by that process, we would get referral.
Yes. But what does referral mean and what is being referred? Is it, are we talking about the, the legislation or the site plan application?
All special permits have to be referred to the planning board and the ARB.
And, and referral means we would. Get sympathy application.
Not where we are now.
Right.
Right, you would get the complete application and you would have a certain timeframe to prepare a response.
A recommendation of sorts to the town.
You would make recommendations to the town board based on the application. And would include, you know, the applicant coming before you.
And presenting.
And that's, that's every special permit.
Every special permit does that, you know, discussion with the applicant. You've asked for extensions of time in the past.
Now, now in the last draft that you worked on, that version had contemplated that instead of sending the town board. Just a, a cold memo, that you'd actually sit alongside and have a joint meeting. And we can potentially get back to something like that, but I think we heard from the last joint work session, concerned that there could be some. Confusion or lack of clarity bringing two boards together.
So look, I think, I love our joint meetings. I think that they're great.
They are excellent.
I think that there is going to be a point when it's not appropriate. Because I don't think you want necessarily the town board to be sitting there. Like, we're not gonna much in, much to contribute. To certain discussions that only the planning board is gonna have, right? I, I. Don't necessarily know that much about a SEPA or whatever it is you, you guys have expertise on. I don't know that it's necessarily helpful for us to be sitting there, but. Once you've had those meetings as a planning board, I think then having a joint meeting. With the town board to go over what your thoughts are on that is, would actually be really helpful. Instead of just getting the memo and then we go, okay.
I agree, and I think I was the one who said that, gee, you know, ten people voting on this thing is crazy.
Yeah.
And not only voting on it is it crazy, but the process to get to a vote is gonna drive that man crazy. Because he's not, he's gonna come out of meetings and not know what he's supposed to do next. And we have that as one of the difficulties on the planning board with five people. African comes for us and one guy says, you know, I want this, and somebody else says, I think we ought to be looking at that. And the, the African comes out, he's like, oh my gosh, you know, this is not what am I supposed to do? So what would be important in that environment is that it be clear who the decision maker is, right? And the structure is set up that way. But gratefully, giving other voices a chance to come in and, and make a contribution to your discussions.
Of course. I think that's why we're here. I think we've been trying to make that.
Right.
As clear as possible with you, with the community, with everyone. This is a joint venture. It has to work. It's important to me, it's important to Lisa, it's important to Vicky and Holly and Jeremy, that we hear you. We're working together, we're moving forward together. That is. It's essential, it's essential.
The reason I, I came with alarm is because I was not aware that the underlines on supply wasn't clear to me. In this, and that it maybe doesn't have to be clear in this, if you're saying that it doesn't. And then this, this other meeting got pulled out. And so, well, it's your discretion to have it, maybe. So I was a little bit concerned about where this might be going, but I feel better about it now.
Well, I can tell you that as long as I sit on the board, we will have that joint meeting, because I think that collaboration is essential.
I agree.
Well, we really enjoy it and we, I mean, we all love this town.
Yes, you're absolutely right. Okay.
All right.
Yeah, so we have a little bit more work to do. Um, but I think we could be, we can talk about this, but we could have this draft. Then for. And figure out when.
Yeah, we should get some more standards and.
But I think March is not on the list.
Well, in the meantime, maybe we can put on our agenda discussion, looking at what, you know, height actually means in this case. I don't know how we get our arms around that, but.
What's your next meeting?
Well, it's only, it's only a general. Discussion of this is on your agenda.
Discussion of your memo is on the agenda.
Yeah. We're gonna, we're gonna get on the case and see what we can do.
All right, well, I think this was really helpful. I know we went about a half mile over, but thank you, everybody, for staying.
Yes, thank you.
Um, and so you're gonna now take this based on comments today. Revise that we're gonna put in that blank for the fee as we consider that and, um.
Yeah, great, great.
Good night.